At the mic this afternoon, evening that we're here today. This is actually the, one of the very few times that I love to come down and present. I'm going to give a proclamation this evening for a very special person. And I had about a three or four-page one, but since everybody was in a hurry tonight, I cut it down to one. So I am, I am going to read this proclamation and if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask Ms. Satterfield to join me at the podium.
Come on down, come on down.
Now, if you're nervous, you should be. You love to be down here at the podium.
Love it.
Every time.
Every time.
Every time. So those of you that know, Ms. Satterfield will be leaving us this week. Friday will be her last day. And I've put together a proclamation, thanks to the mayor's office. You'll get my proclamation at a later time. It might not have been as appropriate as this one is that I'm reading this evening, unless it comes out while I'm standing here. If they had time to print it, I'll read it as well. Stand right in the very front. There we go. All right, everybody see Brooke real well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. This is right where she loves to be. Except for the fact, I don't have any light down here at the podium now. All right. I'm going to do, is this one come on still? Oh, it does come on. That works.
The light hour.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Madam Chair and the City Council, I'd like to read this proclamation this evening for a very good friend and colleague and somebody who has dedicated a tremendous amount of time, effort, years at this council. Every single one of you have seen her every week, sometimes every day of every week, and out and about constantly supporting this city. So with that, whereas Brooke Satterfield has exemplified exceptional leadership and tireless commitment to our community throughout her tenure at the City of Chattanooga, holding various roles such as Executive Assistant to the Chief of Staff, Project Coordinator, Director of Policy, Planning and Implementation, Deputy Chief of Staff, and currently serving as the Chief Policy Officer. And whereas Brooke's contributions have left a lasting impact on our city, she played a crucial role in organizing significant events, including the inaugural statewide Women's Policy Conference, and overseeing special events like the Fallen Five Memorial Dedication, Eastlake Park reopening, Mayor's Youth Council Get Out the Vote and Gun Violence Events, Ironman Events, Chattanooga Marathon, numerous state-of-the-city events, and more. Whereas Brooke's leadership within the COVID-19 Response Team in 2020 undoubtedly saved lives, especially among our most vulnerable senior population. Brooke spearheaded and orchestrated the comprehensive volunteer and donation operation in the immediate aftermath of the April 2020 F-3 tornadoes, establishing a fully operational response within a 24-hour timeframe, and facilitated hundreds of volunteers who logged thousands of hours of work removing yard debris, chainsawing fallen trees, tarping damaged roofs, and salvaging personal belongings. And whereas Brooke guided Mayor Kelly's One Chattanooga Recovery and Relief Plan, a $30 million investment plan to close economic gaps in Chattanooga that has made strides to address challenges related to affordable housing, homelessness, community violence, early learning, and more. Whereas under Brooke's leadership, the Office of Homelessness and Supportive Housing achieved a record-breaking number of formerly unhoused individuals, finding stable housing, and has played a pivotal role in driving the administration's efforts to combat homelessness. And whereas Brooke's dedication to community well-being is further highlighted by her role in hiring the first administrator for the Department of Early Learning and working in collaboration with department leadership to lay the foundation and shaping the trajectory of this vital new department for the betterment of even the youngest of Chattanooga residents. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Councilman Ken Smith, hereby proclaim April 12th, 2024, as Brooke Satterfield Day in the City of Chattanooga, in support of her lasting contributions to our city to make Chattanooga a safe and vibrant community in which we live, work, visit, and thrive. Because she hates to speak, I have asked her to say something.
Yes, ma'am. Me, ma'am. Ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. And thank all of you. I, as a lot of y'all know, I got a job in the mayor's office about seven years ago, kind of by accident. I finished my masters and got a, got a job working for the Brooke administration. And I thought I'd be here for six months, maybe a year, and I'd move on. But seven years later, almost, here we are. And I remember coming to my first council meeting and literally on the way down, I was like, what, what do, what do they do? What, what does City Council do? And so the last six and a half years have been a phenomenal journey and incredibly humbling and incredibly rewarding, but I've learned a lot from each and every one of you. Several of you, literally, I feel like have watched me grow up. And it's, it's, it's been really rewarding and phenomenal to be able to learn from all of you, be able to partner with all of you, work with all of you. I have a lot of respect for, for each and every one of you and very, very much appreciative for, for all of your, all of your support and for the partnership that you all have with, with the administration. And I know the mayor really appreciates it. And we've got a great team and you all are a great team and, and I'm grateful for each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry. Come back, Brooke. Come on back, Brooke. We had Councilman Ledford followed by Councilman Henderson.
I tried.
You, yeah, not till Friday. Brooke, I've called you, the first one to call you, I believe, after your announcement hit the email. And so I, what I said to you privately stands, but some of that I will, worth repeating, and that is, you are a remarkable person. You're right. We came in about the same time. And watching you not only evolve, but thrive, that's a great word in there, has been absolutely inspiring to work alongside of you. Your candor is just refreshing and it's so nice. We worked on a couple of disasters, unfortunately, and you were leading the way every single time. And I knew I could count on you after the tornadoes. You kept me not only informed, but when I needed boots on the ground inside neighborhoods, Councilman Henderson came out as well with me, and I certainly appreciate that. I'll never forget that either. You were there orchestrating to help the people of District Four. And that's just a testament to, to your, your commitment to the people of Chattanooga. And I know you're not going far and I look forward to working with you on future projects, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Ledford, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Councilman Smith's proclamation, if anybody paid attention to it, in the seven short years that you were here, really laid out what you were able to get accomplished. And I, I think with you, it was about getting things done. And when you're up here, you look for somebody out there that can get things done, and you were always that person for me. You will be missed, Brooke.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Henderson. Yeah. Council, oh, Brooke. Brooke, I need, I need, they go nowhere, Brooke. There's still two more people here. Councilman Hester.
I just want to wish you well on your future endeavors. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you, Councilman.
Almost, Brooke. Almost. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. I'm glad that Councilman Smith decided to do a proclamation because it causes us to stop and write down the things that have happened. And, and when we do that, we can reflect. So thank you very much, Councilman Smith. In most important work, the days are long and the years are short. And that proclamation really showed the breadth of your experience and the depth of your capacity. And I think we're really fortunate to have you in Chattanooga. And I will miss you as well and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you all. I appreciate you all.
That is all. Thank you. All righty. All right, we'll go ahead and move on with our agenda. So we have ordinances on the final reading on the Parks and Outdoor. Madam Clerk, welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In ordinance amended Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 26, Sections 26, 23, 26, 28, and 2630, establishing fees for specialty park event reservations, softball field rentals, and champions club for Chattanooga parks, community centers, and recreational facilities.
All right. Motion in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Ordnances on the first reading. Madam Clerk, item A.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 3827 Mountain Top Road from R1 Residential Zone to A1 Urban Agricultural Zone, subject to certain conditions.
All right. Councilman Henderson followed by Councilman Ledford.
Madam Chair, the applicant has emailed me and requested that we defer this one month, so I am making a motion that we defer until May the 14th.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned in properly second. Uh, Councilman Ledford.
Second.
Okay. All right. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I failed to ask, is the applicant present?
He is not.
He is not present. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, item B.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 2815 Cummings Highway from M3 Warehouse and Wholesale Zone and R2 Residential Zone to C2 Convenience Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
All right. Is the applicant present? I see an applicant. Any opposition present? Okay, that is in District One. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Mr. Jones coming out to the Neighborhood Association and presenting this application to them. There was no opposition. It looks like everybody was in favor. I move for approval.
All right. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I failed to ask, is the applicant present?
He is not.
He is not present. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, item B.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 2815 Cummings Highway from M3 Warehouse and Wholesale Zone and R2 Residential Zone to C2 Convenience Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
All right. Is the applicant present? I see an applicant. Any opposition present? Okay, that is in District One. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Mr. Jones coming out to the Neighborhood Association and presenting this application to them. There was no opposition. It looks like everybody was in favor. I move for approval.
All right. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, item C.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 313 Tremont Street from R1 Residential Zone to RTZ Residential Townhouse. There are lot lines on, subject to certain conditions.
All right. Madam Vice Chair, followed by Councilman Ledford.
Thank you. I don't believe that the applicant is here tonight, but let's confirm that.
Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? All right, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Based on the conversation that we had at our agenda meeting and the presentations that are going to happen next week around the right-of-way, I move to defer this item two weeks until April 23rd.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, item C.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 313 Tremont Street from R1 Residential Zone to RTZ Residential Townhouse. There are lot lines on, subject to certain conditions.
All right. Madam Vice Chair, followed by Councilman Ledford.
Thank you. I don't believe that the applicant is here tonight, but let's confirm that.
Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? All right, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Based on the conversation that we had at our agenda meeting and the presentations that are going to happen next week around the right-of-way, I move to defer this item two weeks until April 23rd.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to defer until April the?
23rd.
23rd. All right. All right, Madam Clerk, item D.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 6745 Customer Delight Drive from R1 Residential Zone to R3 Residential Zone, subject to certain conditions.
All right. Is the applicant present? All right, I see an applicant. Is there any opposition present? All right. That is in District Six. Uh, Councilwoman Byrd. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Byrd followed by, uh, Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval. And then I'm going to move an amendment.
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned in properly second. Did, and you have a motion?
Yes, yes. I move that the zoning be changed to RTZ. That's a down zoning, and so it doesn't need any additional hearings from R3. And also to drop all the conditions except one that has to do with the trees hoarding. We went over all that in detail at 3:30. I move that amendment through.
Okay.
Can I read the condition for you?
What?
Can I read the condition for you?
Oh, sure. I thought it was already on record. Go ahead.
I want to make sure there is only one condition at this point in time, and that one condition is required perimeter tree buffer planning shall consist of multiple species types with no one specific tree species constituting more than 33% of the total number of trees planted within the required buffer area. And that's the only condition.
Sure. All right.
And, and Mr. Price, you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. So I, I moved that amendment, and I think I got a second.
Yes, we have a second on the amendment. Any comments or questions about the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, amendment passes.
I move approval as amended, please.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned in properly second to move as amended. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, item E.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 4118 Dodson Avenue from R2 Residential Zone to UGC Urban General Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
All right. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
All right. Is there any opposition present? Oh, you don't have to get up.
Okay.
You don't have to get up. All right. Is any, uh, I'm sorry, is there any opposition present?
Possibly.
Possibly? Uh-huh. All right. All right. That is in District Seven. And I will defer this one to Councilman Ledford.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's my understanding from our meetings?
That was me. Yeah, that was me. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my understanding that there might be a few details left to iron out, so I'm going to make a motion to defer this one week.
Yes. Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned in properly second to defer one week. Thank you, Councilman Ledford. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item F.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 1650 Madison Street from URD to Urban Residential Attached Zone to URA3 Urban Residential Attached Zone, subject to certain conditions.
All right. Is the applicant present? All right. Any opposition present? All right. I will defer it to Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a rinse and repeat of the previous, so some details to iron out, so I make a motion to defer for one week to April 16th.
Second.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilman Ledford. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to defer one week. Madam Clerk, item G.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 3354 Charter Charger Drive from M1 Manufacturing Zone to O1 Office Zone.
All right. Is the applicant present? All right. Any opposition present? All right. I will defer that one to Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is in your district. I know you've been following it extremely closely. And with that, I do move to approve.
Second.
Yes, thank you so much. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Councilman Ledford. I appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hopefully be back next week, making my own motions. Very excited. Very excited.
I'll take it with me.
All right. Madam Clerk, item H.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 2608 Dodson Avenue from R1 Residential Zone to R2 Residential Zone.
All right. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? This is in District Nine. Councilwoman Kung-Ra.
I move to defer.
All right. Okay, we have a motion to defer to April 16th for the proper second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we've reached resolutions of the Economic Development. Madam Clerk, we'll take items A, B, and C as a group.
Item A, a resolution authorizing the mayor his destiny to apply for and if awarded, accept the Social Impact Partnership to Pay for Results Act (CIPRA) grant from the U.S. Department of Treasury for the Office of Homelessness and Supportive Housing to increase housing stability for children and families for an amount not to exceed $10 million. Item B, a resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Economic Development to enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Bethlehem Center for the Purpose of Community Engagement as part of the RECOMPETE Strategic Development Grant focused on planning to implement workforce development strategies that connect residents to good jobs with living wages for an amount not to exceed $89,000. Item C, a resolution authorizing the mayor his destiny to apply for and if awarded, accept the U.S. Economic Development Administration and U.S. Department of Commerce to stress Area RECOMPETE Pilot Program Phase Two to create a blueprint for effective workforce development centered on good jobs that meet the needs of both residents and employers in our community for a maximum award of $50 million.
All right. Counsel, you've heard the reading?
Move to approve.
All right. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, we'll take items D and E under the mayor's office as a group.
Item D, a resolution to amend Resolution Number 31996, confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Sidney Smith to the Chattanooga Public Art Commission for a term beginning on March 13, 2024, and ending on March 12, 2027. Item E, a resolution to amend Resolution Number 31997, confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Ryan Coffett to the Chattanooga Public Art Commission for a term beginning on March 13, 2024, and ending on March 12, 2027.
You've heard the reading?
Mr. Chris.
All right. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Planning, item F.
A resolution approving a special exceptions permit for residential plant unit development amendment for property located at 6107 Hickson Pike.
All right. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've spoken to the community and the applicant, and the applicant has requested an additional 30 days to continue to try to work through some of the community concerns, so I would like to move to defer to May 7th.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned in properly second to defer to May 7th. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Madam Clerk, item G.
A resolution approving a new special exceptions permit for a liquor store located at 5032 Brainerd Road, Chattanooga, Tennessee, 37411.
All right. That is in District Six. Okay, it's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries with one no. Public Works will take items H and I as a group. There's no objection from counsel? All right, Madam Clerk.
Item H, a resolution authorizing the change of construction engineering and inspection CEI consultant from ICOM to Wiser Consultants on the Manufacturers' Row Ham Road Gateway Project, contract number T15010, T.PEN 123398.00, to install a 10-foot-wide multimodal pathway from Highway 27 to Marcus and Ben Row due to ICOM's contract aspiring for the city's share not to exceed $120,000. Item I, a resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Public Works to renew year four of a four-year term for the uncalled-blanket contracts for the geo-environmental consulting and construction materials testing services, contract number E21002301, with the following seven consulting firms. One Geo Services LLC, two Geo Syntec Consultants, three KS Ware and Associates LLC, four Essin Me Inc., five Stan Tech Consulting Services Inc., six Terricon Consultants Inc., and seven Thompson Engineering Inc., based upon the three service categories of geotechnical, construction materials, testing, and environmental services, for each qualified consultant for an annual amount of $2 million, $2 million to be used by all departments.
Move to approve.
All right. It's been motioned in properly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item J.
A resolution authorizing the administrative of Waste Water to approve change order numbers two, three, and four with Burns &amp; McDonald for contract number W17020101, Dodge Ranch Basin Improvement Phase Two for an increase of $370,409.83 for additional project management and construction administration as a result of extended construction duration for a total total amount of $1,397,761.58.
All right, Councilman Ledford.
Move to approve, second.
All right, it's been motioned improperly second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have come to purchases. Bring it on down for one last round, Brooke.
All right, we have four purchases recommended for approval this evening. The first is from the Fleet Management Division of Public Works, a one-time purchase of two maintenance service trucks with cranes for the wastewater department in the amount of The award will go to M&amp;L Utilities DBA Cherokee Truck Equipment as the best bid for the City of Chattanooga. Next, from Fleet Management Division of Public Works, a one-time purchase of one light-duty service truck with crane for the wastewater department in the amount of $183,000. The award will go to Lee Smith Company as the best bid for the City of Chattanooga. Next, from the Department of Parks and Outdoors, you have one-time purchase of an intelligent one-field marking paint robot for use by Parks and Outdoors in the amount of $66,695. The award will go to Turf Tank as the best bid for the City of Chattanooga. Also, from the Department of Parks and Outdoors, Parks Maintenance, one-time purchase of water fountains for Chattanooga City Parks for use by Parks Maintenance in the amount of $95,215. The award will go to Doggone Parks, Inc. as the best bid for the City of Chattanooga.
All right. Okay, it's been motioned improperly second for purchases. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We also have one sole source purchase to report and it's from wastewater. This is a sole source purchase of Hartzell Industrial Fan Parts in the amount of $29,573. The award will go to Rogers and Morgan as the authorized dealer for this area. A solicitation was performed to confirm the sole source.
All right, thank you so much, Brooke, we appreciate you. We're getting every dollar out of you, every dollar. Then we have time for committee report. Councilman Henderson.
Hold for Madam Chair.
All right, Councilman Smith.
Hold for Madam Chair.
Okay, Councilman Ledford.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Hester.
Parks and Public Works did meet today and will meet again next week.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kung-Rah.
No.
Councilwoman Noel.
No report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burns.
No report, ma'am.
Madam Vice Chair Hill.
No report.
All right, thank you so much. We have other business, city attorney.
Yes, ma'am, we have a certificate of compliance this evening for a retail liquor store that is AV Group LLC DBA Lamp Light Package Store. It'll be located at 5032 Brainerd Road in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and the applicants or the folks that are in charge of that business are qualified to be able to operate the business and the location complies with our local zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you so much. Now comes time for persons wishing to address the council. If you wish to address the council, please line up behind this podium here while our city attorney reads the rules.
Yes, ma'am, at the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council and here's your rules. Each speaker wishing to address the council can only be recognized at the microphone up front for that purpose, can't have more than three minutes to speak and you can address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi judicial authority and not on matters which are not under their authority or regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. Don't engage in vulgar or obscene language nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others. Address your comments to the council as a whole and not make comments directed towards individual council members. And lastly, do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting which is prohibited by Tennessee law and someone commits that offense if a person substantially obstructs or interferes with the meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, please go ahead, sir.
Nathan Bird, District Seven. First, I'm going to put on my Neighborhood Association hat and on behalf of the Community Association of Historic St. Elmo, I'd like to invite all of you to our Spring Festival, Hello, St. Elmo, on April 20th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in downtown, quote unquote, St. Elmo. There will be food, music, crafts, and the annual St. Elmo Corgi Parade, which draws a big crowd. Now, I'm going to take off my Neighborhood Association hat and speak purely on behalf of myself. I know it can be disheartening as a public servant when the majority of the comments you hear from us are complaints or lists of projects that are yet to be addressed. The work of a public servant is never done. There's always going to be new problems to be solved, but if we never recognize the victories along the way, it can be really easy to get burned out, so I want to spend some time doing just that. First, I want to thank our 311 department and everybody who works with them. I'm a serial 311 user, I probably put in one request a week at least and overall, the responses I've received have been helpful and prompt. In particular, I want to highlight a request I made on St. Elmo Avenue outside of the 1885 Restaurant. There was an old driveway that is no longer in use, it's been blocked off, but because there's no curb, people would often park there, blocking the sidewalk and the able-bodied among us like myself can simply walk around through the gravel, but anybody with a stroller or wheelchair has to go the very long way around or, you know, make a very arduous trip through the gravel. So, I made a request on 311 and after some back and forth, I was pleased to find this area has now been protected by flex posts and I have not seen anybody parking there since, which is a big win for everybody, but especially those who, you know, need mobility aids. Second, I want to thank the Neighborhood Services Department and especially Perrin Lance. Perrin is a tireless public advocate with seemingly endless energy and perseverance. He's helped me with more neighborhood issues than I can count and he is, in my opinion, the gold standard of a public employee. I'm really amazed by what he and his department do with a small budget and a small staff and as we enter budget season, I can only wonder out loud what he could do with more resources, wink, wink. Lastly, Fraser Avenue. The people spoke and the city government listened and I want to give credit to the whole city government for moving forward with what I think is the safest option for Fraser Avenue and I want to give particular credit to Councilwoman Hill for heading up a really intensive public engagement process. I hope we can see this process repeated throughout our city to ensure that all of our streets are safe for all users. So, there's still a lot of work to do and in a growing and vibrant city like Chattanooga, there will always be work to do, but I want to thank you all and the rest of the city government for these small victories and I hope to see more of them in the future. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nathan. We rarely hear that kind of stuff, so we appreciate that, we appreciate that. All right.
Hi, my name is Mia Landis and I'm from the University of Tennessee, Chattanooga, and I'm in the Social Work Department and I thought I would come today to talk a little bit about the homelessness situation. Now, I know that people have come in here before and talked about it, I just thought that maybe I could give you sort of a on-campus perspective. So, I live just outside of campus and a lot of homeless people have been recently coming and knocking on our doors, trying to get in. I've seen a lot of people living under railroads, I've seen people living on the streets in different doorways, construction zones especially, and I just, I don't think this is a great situation. So, I did a little more research and I found the CHAT Foundation, the Center for Homelessness Advancement, and it states that over 3,000 people are currently homeless in our area and over 1,000 of those are in Hamilton County. And this is really discouraging and I don't really know what to do about it, but I know that coming here is a start.
Hi, thank you, Mia. I am Arden Perry, I'm from the Department of Social Work as a UTC student and as we see the increase in our homeless population is sadly rising, we do have a temporary fix and that is to deconstruct the homeless barrier benches. I know those were put in place, but that is sadly where people sleep at night and I think that would be a great start to helping this issue rather than building things that deter them from sleeping there because that is where they find residence. Furthermore, if these benches are not fixed in the upcoming months, we need to at least better educate our homeless on where they can find resources. There are so many resources out in the city of Chattanooga and I think we, as a city, can do a better job of educating our homeless by putting up flyers and posters and everything like that. Like Mia said, the CHAT Foundation, our youth homeless population is very high as well